Ready to.
Sure.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Eastland Metal Planning Board. In attendance, Pete Punderson, George Kingston, Russ Denver, Cassandra Charaswello, Bailey Mitchell and Nina Fazio, as well as myself, John Torscha. Moving right along to some minutes that we have. So we have the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting minutes. So I think everybody's had a chance to get those. I also actually just want to add first, if anybody in the audience recording besides LCAT, if so, please identify yourself.
I don't see your age.
Well, the news is here.
Okay.
Done. We have twenty-two news is here.
Okay. Would they just be able to identify themselves for the record?
There are twenty-two news.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
New guys in town.
Awesome. Um, all right. Well, getting back to our minutes, um, the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting minutes. Uh, is there um, any issues or um, everybody should have had a chance to look over them?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, um, we'll do a roll call vote because I am virtual. Um, so Pete.
Aye.
George.
Aye.
Uh, Russ.
Abstain.
And Cassandra.
I abstain.
And I am a yes. And I, all right, moving on to our November first, two thousand twenty-two open session, uh, meeting minutes. Um, any uh, correct issues with that or?
Yes, um, under the executive session.
We're only doing open meetings.
Oh, okay. She said I had to say, yeah, there's something missing.
The vote to adjourn. Yeah, it was an open session.
The vote to adjourn the executive session, it just doesn't say that I voted yes, so.
So, uh, I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Perfect. Is there a I'll second that. Motion has been made and seconded. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do another roll call vote. Um, so Pete.
Uh, abstain.
Uh, George.
Aye.
Uh, Russ.
Aye.
Uh, Cassandra.
Aye.
And I am an I as well. Um, so Mr. Clerk, the first item on the agenda.
So I'd like to ask if we could possibly take, um, under public hearings, Kate's case site, two thousand twenty-two dash oh seven, out of order, it is the, uh, site plan review for the construction of warehouse building and associated site improvements at three thirty Chestnut Street. The applicant has requested a continuance to the December twentieth, two thousand twenty meeting of the planning board.
Yeah, so this, um, th- this is being continued because the, uh, our board, the planning board, uh, in the peer review consultant has not uh, yet received the extended traffic impact analysis, um, that was originally requested when we, you know, la- last discussed this at our September twentieth public hearing and the applicant, uh, was one that has requested a continuance to allow time for the board and the consultant to um, continue reviewing the, uh, the traffic independent. Uh, there's no other information beyond that, but, but I do know that they still have some time, need some time to review that and for our board to review that.
So I'd move that we take that out of order.
I'll second that.
Roll call, John.
Okay. Any, uh, any other further discussion?
This is to take it out of order.
Correct. Um, so roll call Pete.
Aye.
George.
Aye.
Uh, Russ.
Aye.
Cassandra.
Aye.
And I am an I as well. Um, so yeah, pretty much what I just said, kind of, uh, that is the primary reason for this uh, continuance that was requested for this item. Um, so I'm not sure if anybody else from the board has any other questions or comments.
Well, I'll make a motion to continue it until the December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Second.
Six o'clock.
At six o'clock. Thank you.
Perfect. Um, any, uh, motions been made and seconded? Any other further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do another roll call vote. Uh, Pete.
Aye.
George.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
Cassandra.
Aye.
And I am an I as well. So going back to our regular, uh, meeting, uh, schedule.
All right, uh, case SPRW two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-four. Request for site plan review waiver for FM cleaning service, a home office at seven Odeon Ave. Assessors parcel ID one B dash four, three dash six, seven, seven. In the residence B zoning district applicant Maria Machado, seven Odeon Ave. East Long Metal Mass, oh, one, oh, two, eight, tabled from, uh, November one, twenty twenty.
Okay. Is there somebody, is the applicant here or somebody representing the applicant?
Maria Machado? Okay, hi. Can you just come up here so you, we can put you on camera? And the chairman is right there on the video.
Hi, Maria. Um, so basically just if you can kind of give us, um, uh, the business, um, some of the, you know, the what, what, what'll be happening, um, with the, at the business site, um, if there's any commercial vehicles, just kind of an explanation of what the business is and.
Yes, it's a cleaning service. I go to family's home for cleaning. And, uh, if I get a big job, I do it in a, in the business. I don't, nothing to do with my house. I just need your address for, you know, mail.
Yeah, no employees or anything will be going to the, okay. And there's, uh, do you have any commercial vehicles or?
I have, I use my car. Yeah.
All right, um, well, I'll bring this to the board. Does the board have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, we'll go to a roll call vote. So Pete.
Aye.
Uh, George.
Aye.
Uh, Russ.
Aye.
Uh, Cassandra.
Aye.
Uh, and I am an I as well.
All set.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Signing.
Thank you so much, Grant. Uh, next item, Mr.
Yep. Number two, case SPRW two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-five, request for a site plan review waiver for autumn lane decor. A retail store at forty-four Shaker Road, GIS forty-six. Assessors parcel ID twenty-seven dash one, six, eight, dash zero. In an existing structure located in the business zoning district, applicant Lori Beeston and Judith Cusano, forty-four Shaker Road, East Long Metal Mass, oh, one, oh, two, eight, tabled from eleven, oh, one, twenty-two.
So there's somebody, either the applicant or somebody representing the applicant here.
They're on their way.
Perfect.
Oh, thanks.
So good evening. Um, so just kind of give us a explanation kind of of what the business is, um, and sort of from basically what we just did with the previous applicant, sort of, um, are there any commercial vehicles? Will there be any employees, um, at the home? Um, so just a little bit of more information about the business.
Okay, so we are opening up a boutique. Um, we have some furniture, we have a lot of boutique items that we buy wholesale. Um, there is no commercial vehicle, local artists, local artists, we're focusing on local artists and, and, and having them display different weeks and no plenty of parking, no, what else was?
Hours of operation.
Um, it's not going to be a nine to five, it's probably going to be like Tuesday to Sunday, eleven to four or something. We're trying to work around, we are hooked to, um, coffee time, and we're trying to work around them, so they, um, when they're closed, we're kind of going to be open.
Okay.
No employees, just us. My nails.
The building, all you need.
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept.
I will second that.
Okay. Uh, motion is main seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, so Pete.
Aye.
Uh, George.
Aye.
Uh, Russ.
Aye.
Cassandra.
Aye.
And I am an I as well, so.
Thank you.
Are you going to open?
Two, December.
I'm making the donuts now. That's all I could say. Every day I go in and I make the donuts. I'm hoping like, oh, December, the latest December fifteenth.
That's a lucky.
Don't have to sign us.
Yes.
Case SPRW two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-seven, request for site plan review waiver for Costas three D imogen, imaging ink DBA jelly on my belly. For change in location from three ten North Main Street, six oh four Main Street, suite two. Assessors parcel ID one A dash ninety-four dash three twenty-one. In an existing structure located in the business zoning district applicant Tom Costas, fifty-five Benedict Terrace, Long Metal Mass, oh, one, one, oh, six, tabled for eleven, one, twenty-two.
The applicant here or somebody representing applicant?
Is, are they on Zoom?
Oh. Rick, uh, take a raise, ask John if he can raise a hand if he's here.
Oh, yeah. So yeah, if you are, uh, here representing the applicant, if they, or you are the applicant, if you can just raise your hand, if you're on Zoom.
I don't think so.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not seeing anything either. So then, um, if nobody is in attendance there or on Zoom, um, what is the pleasure of the board?
I think we'd have to move to the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we do.
Yeah. Nobody's here to represent it. We don't.
Make a motion to table it again.
Okay.
Until December twentieth, is it at six o'clock?
The next meeting, it would be the
December sixth.
December sixth, yeah.
Sixth.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded.
Second.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, um, we'll do a roll call again. Uh, so Pete.
Aye.
Uh, George.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
Uh, Cassandra.
Aye.
I am an I as well.
Hi. Case SPRW two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-nine. Request for site plan review waiver for Dusty Goat Farm, a farm stand at two, two, nine Hampden Road. Assessors parcel ID seventy-seven dash fifty-five dash zero. On a one point nine one plus or minus acre lot in the residence A zoning district applicant Aaron Sewell, two, two, nine Hampden Road, East Long Metal Mass, oh, one, oh, two, eight.
Okay, is the applicant here or somebody representing the applicant?
I'll make a motion to continue this to the December sixth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Second.
Okay.
Six.
You have to give the time for this.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote. Uh, so Pete.
Aye.
Uh, Russ. Or George, excuse me.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
Uh, Cassandra.
Aye.
And I am an I as well.
So can I just ask a question before we move on? So, um, there is a structure on Bertlin Avenue that is, it's a, it's actually a structure. It's probably eight feet long, four feet high, and they're selling, um, firewood from it. Um, would that require a, a site plan? Uh, or does that, like agricultural get involved in that? Agricultural act.
What's the same thing with this dusty goat?
Well, Dusty Goat, she's got a farm there.
Yeah.
Okay. I can't see Bertland Avenue has got enough woods on it to be selling wood from.
It's actually to the rear of the residence is stacked with firewood and they just bring it out and they put it in this.
Five dollars a bundle type.
Five dollars a bundle, yeah, type of thing. And it's been there for six months or so.
I would refer that to the, um, zoning enforcement office.
Yeah, we would too.
Okay.
Because they, they have to be bringing it in. They can't. They're presented enough.
Yeah, oh yeah, they're not, they're not chopping it down there.
Yeah, that, that, that would be, uh.
A business.
Business, yeah.
Probably dropping off, splitting it.
That's manufacturing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Uh, case SPRW two thousand twenty-two dash four zero. Request for site plan review waiver for wellness within LLC, a mental health and wellness service, service facility at one sixty-eight Denzil Road, assessors parcel ID ten dash nineteen dash four in an existing structure located in the industrial garden park zoning district applicant Heather Godette, one sixty-eight Denzil Road, East Long Metal Mass, oh, one, oh, two, eight.
So I think I see, um, Heather in the audience here. She can just raise her hand.
Yeah.
Can you bring her in?
I, yeah, uh, on Zoom, I meant.
Oh, she did. I already.
Oh. Okay, um, I am, uh, she's not coming up for me right now, um. So I, oh, there she is. Hi, Heather. Um, so yeah, so basically just give us a little bit more information on the, uh, the business, um, what the operating hours would be, uh, number of employees, just so kind of some basic information on the business like that.
Sure. So we are a mental health therapy and, um, holistic wellness, um, practice. We are currently doing mental health therapy virtually and we're hoping for January to open to add, um, things like yoga, Tai Chi, meditation, services like that. Um, our hours will vary based on client appointment, but generally it'll be nine AM to seven or eight PM, depending again on client appointment. Uh, we have seven employees currently. And did I cover all the questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect. Um, so does the board have any questions for the, uh?
Just for the people, for the people who might be watching on television, can you tell us, is there an existing business in that location that you're replacing? Or is that empty?
The, the building used to be occupied entirely by ATI, uh, physical therapy and they vacated part of the building, which we.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Um, hearing none, um, so I'll do roll call vote. Uh, so Pete.
Aye.
Uh, George.
Aye.
Uh, Russ.
Aye.
Uh, Cassandra.
Aye.
And I am an I as well. So that passes, um, so.
Thank you.
Definitely. Have a great evening.
You too. Thanks.
Case, case A and R, two thousand twenty-two dash zero seven. Request by applicant for an endorsement of a plan believed not to require subdivision to the subdivision control law for the division of seventy-eighth Lee Street. Assessors parcel ID fifty-four dash one dash zero. For the purpose of creating two new parcels, parcel A, a zero point nine two plus or minus acre lot and parcel B, nine point two seven plus or acre, plus or minus acre. Uh, both located in the residence AA zoning district applicant Greg Buchinski, one twenty, or one oh seven Towler Drive, Hampton, Virginia, two, three, six, zero. Excuse me, two, three, six, six, six.
Okay, so I, I think we have, uh, somebody here representing the applicant.
Yes, hello.
Good, good evening, Mr. Smith.
Uh, good afternoon.
All right, good afternoon. Um.
This line.
So, uh, just kind of give us a rundown of this A and R, um, and kind of explain maybe the geography of where it is, on Lee Street.
Um, yeah, it's, uh, it's on the Wesley side of Lee Street, about halfway down, about the middle of the street. Basically, they are just going to be creating parcel A as shown. Um, meets the frontage and, and square footage requirements, uh, in the double A zone.
Okay. Um, I'll bring this to the board. Does the board have any questions? On this application? So.
Hearing. Meets frontage and, and area, so.
It's fine.
Pretty standard, um.
I'll make a motion to endorse the plan.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, so Pete.
Aye.
Uh, George.
Aye.
Uh, Russ.
Aye.
Uh, Cassandra.
Aye.
And I am an I as well.
Thanks, guys.
Definitely. So have a great evening.
So we're in pub, we're in public hearings, uh, case site, two thousand twenty-two dash ten. Request for a site plan review for the replacement of a handicap ramp and associated site developments at six Summers Road. Assessors parcel ID twenty-seven dash ninety-five dash zero. On a zero point four two plus or minus acre lot in the business zoning district applicant Joseph Versard, six hundred Union Street, West Springfield, Mass, oh, one, oh, eight, nine.
Okay, so somebody in app, the applicant here or somebody representing the applicant?
I am the applicant.
Hey.
Okay. And I work for Adams and Ruxton Construction Company. I don't know if that was ever mentioned in there. In the paper listed my name and my boss was like, I'm like, I I apologize. I know it's all over my building permit if it didn't translate to.
Okay, all right. So just tell us, so the audience can hear what, what you're trying to do there.
Sure, um, so it's a lot of flat work, replacing the ramp, replacing the front landings, because all the grades are really steep, uh, the ramp's too tight. Um, replacing all the rails, um, adding some guard rail. Um, a little bit of revision in the parking lot as far as pavement goes, but very little, just to create that diagonal crosswalk and then, uh, a van handicap accessible spot. And that's about it.
So much more, uh, motorist friendly, pedestrian friendly, ADA friendly.
Really, will it be ADA and, uh, MAB compliant? Yes, it'll be architectural access board, five twenty-one CMR compliant. It won't be, yes. Forty-eight wide in between, one and twelve sculpted out, it'll be good, very good, yep.
Mr. Chair.
Keep first.
Yeah, thank you, Froden.
All right.
Obviously, that was me. I do that to everything. It's just.
Okay, we'll just open the, we, we'll open up the public hearing on this.
Yeah.
If there's anyone who wishes to be heard on this matter, please raise your Zoom hand. Anyone in the audience? Any concerns back there? Uh, and anyone in the audience who might have, uh, might wish to be heard on this matter? Hearing none.
I, I, sorry, Russ, I have, uh, I did get a call from a resident today. Um, they're not present, but I, uh, just want to bring up their concern. They asked, um, if, if, uh, basically, if Keybank could remove, I guess they have a spotlight on, on the, uh, on the property that kind of shines into their yard, but, um, I told them it's not really relevant to the site plan, but, uh, just to bring it up during the meeting, so.
I can relay it. I can bring it forward. Sure.
So do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
By the second?
Second.
Um, we'll do, we'll stay with the roll call. So by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Charaswello.
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. So back to the main matter. What's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Charaswello.
Aye.
I am an I as well.
All set.
Thank you.
And please.
More time and paperwork.
Would you, would you please be so kind to at least, so Bailey Mitchell is the city's planning director, town's planning director?
Sure.
Just maybe after you've, uh, spoken to the bank about that request from the resident, you just let him know that you've done that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Close the loop on that.
And, and I think it's great that Keybank is trying to bring it more into compliance. That's wonderful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
My apologies, my computer was, uh, not being, uh, cooperative just then, so my apologies for dropping off.
But we approved, uh, public hearing number two.
Okay.
Okay. Like the new governor at the same time.
You're gonna like the chair for life. All right, uh, case site, two thousand twenty-two dash eleven. Request for a site plan review for the conversion of an existing building from a repair garage to a single tenant physical therapy office space at fourteen sixteen Center Square. Assessors parcel ID twenty-seven dash one, seven, six, dash zero. On a zero point two zero plus or minus acre lot in the business zoning district applicant Kevin Jennings, seventy-three Chestnut Street, Springfield, Mass, oh, one, one, oh, three. Hi.
How you doing?
How are you?
Good, yeah.
Done? Can I take it over?
Yes, yes. Um, so I know you had come in at our last meeting, um, so this is just, um, kind of a couple, couple small changes. Do you want to just kind of give a update on, you know, basically a quick summary of, of what this entails to the audience?
It's, um, it's a conversion of what was the, uh, the Pride gas station on and repair shop to a single tenant, um, physical therapy, this building.
Awesome, um, because I know we already kind of had a
of the next, the one next to the chocolate store, the
Right.
efficient, yeah.
So, so a year and change ago, just the building with the clock and the old, um, union building. Pennanted the union building, an accounting firm. And then purchased the gas station from Bolduc. Um, we have a tenant, I'm lead.
So you're, you're adding a door facing the rotary and leaving the door that exists there.
Correct, yeah, correct. There's presently one door, um, to get into the property. Um, then are, will be at grade, like in front of a handicap accessible, um, spot with a band lane or whatever you call that, aside. Boating.
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
If, um, you know, tell us the name of the tenant, but any idea hours of operation?
So hours of operation will be seven to seven, seven AM to seven PM, um, two to three employees max. And ten, uh, patients over the course of the twelve hour day. So less than one per hour.
And how many parking spots do you have?
Ten.
Okay.
And with that, um, with owning the two adjacent parcels, we've got the parking field in back, so, um, we can encourage, there's two, we put two parking spots at the rear of this building. So we can encourage employees, the two employees to park in those rare spots. Um, and we're putting a rear, um, access or entrance door on the back of the building.
And do the hours of operation, are they just Monday through Friday or do they extend into the?
Monday through Friday is what I'm.
Thinking. Perfect.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a different look. Thankfully, I mean, my whole life there was a gas station there.
Definitely going to change up the center, so.
Yeah.
Um, so because this is a public hearing, um, like to open the public hearing, um, for those who are in the audience who would like to speak on this or in Zoom. Um, so I'm not sure if anybody's raising their hand, both there or on Zoom.
There's not a person physically in the, in the office or in the auditorium.
Fair enough, um.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded, close public hearing, any further discussion? Hearing none, um, all, uh, so, uh, do roll call again. So Pete.
Aye.
Uh, George.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
Uh, Cassandra.
Aye.
And I am an I as well, uh, so now this comes back to the board, um.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Especially for me.
Motion has been made and seconded, um, any further discussion on?
Other than it's going to be nice to see the activity there.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be great. Not have a vacant building.
Yeah, because Pride has been, or that, that, that lot has been vacant now for a good year or plus, I believe.
That'll be good.
Yeah.
And the traffic will be improved.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so hearing no other, uh, comments or questions, uh, we'll go to a roll call vote, um, uh, Pete.
Aye.
Uh, George.
Aye.
Uh, Russ.
Aye.
Cassandra.
Aye.
And I am an I as well. So. Good luck.
Look, thank you all.
Time to go.
Have a great.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so it looks like our last item on the agenda. Bailey, you have a, uh, director's report for us.
Um, I actually don't, uh, this week I was out. Um, I actually don't, uh, this week, I was out last week with, uh, COVID, well, I was working remotely, but I was, uh, kind of under the weather, so, um, didn't have time to type one up.